We're going to call the meeting to order. And let you know that we, um, this meeting is conducted remotely. There will be no physical, public access during this meeting. There were no opportunity for the public to comment. This meeting is being held electronically pursuant to and in compliance with the continuity of government ordinance or the orders to evacuate change in certain deadlines at the modified public meeting and public hearing practices. And procedures to address the continuity of operations associated with the COVID-19 pandemic adopted April 28th, 2020 by the Orange County Board of Supervisors in accordance with Virginia Code 15.2-1413. This meeting is accessible by YouTube. This is on our website. I will go through the YouTube address pretty quickly, but for those who are listening, it is listed on our website. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot YouTube dot com forward slash channel forward slash U C N L E M L G R X Y D F K C P one eight dash J O O. We're going to have the opportunity now to determine we have a quorum. And we'll start from District Five and go back five, four, three, two, one. Let's talk some of your up.
Jim Hutcherson, District Five Commissioner, five, two, five Harrison Circle, Locust Grove, Virginia, Lake of the Woods.
Julie Zelmaker, three, four, one oh four Indian Town Road, Locust Grove, Virginia.
Tom Brooks, ninety-two fifty Everon Road, Unionville, Virginia.
George Yancey, District Two, one, six, one, seven, oh Coxville Road, Gordonsville,
Jason Capel, sixty-three, fifteen Spotswood Trail, Gordonsville, Virginia. Home of the Champion Brewery Ice House coming your way. Come on to Gordonsville and check it out.
Uh, here you. Okay. Can we have an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Uh, is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Just remove the second. We approve the agenda as presented. Can we have approval of the minutes, please?
So approved.
Approved.
Okay. The, the minutes for April first, two thousand twenty-one has been approved that we would, I'm sorry, has been moved and seconded. We would approve. All in favor, say aye.
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 All of fa, all opposed? Okay, we've got the, and I've got a backup. I didn't carry the motion on the agenda, but all in favor of approval of agenda, say aye. Any opposition? All right, that's taken care of. No new business that I'm, I'm, I'm there with, if everybody could just hang on for ten seconds, I, I've got to adjust Okay, so our first public hearing continuation. Five A. Rezoning twenty dash zero one Signature Series Development has applied to rezon tax Mac partial four dash three from C two general commercial and R four multifamily residential to PD plan development mixed use. This property contains seventy-five point eight acres is located at the intersection of Route Three and seven oh eight. It's situated in the Sub area one Spotswood. Designated by the Germa, I'm sorry, and that's Spotswood and as designated in the Germana Wilderness Area Plan. Uh, is this, I'm sorry, I should have asked when I was talking earlier, is this Josh or Sandra?
Sandra is, um, bringing the items tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Thornton, go ahead. Um, give us a quick briefer, get us up to date, and then tell us what our juncture is at this point.
Okay. Well, you all will remember that, um, I can't remember which meeting now, but, but a few months ago, at the request of the applicant, this matter was deferred to allow them some additional time to assemble some additional materials to be responsive just for the issues that commissioners raised. And because of the impacts of the ongoing pandemic, you did grant that deferral. We needed to have this, you know, on your, your April first agenda to satisfy code requirements for the timing of processing. So they did submit an addendum, uh, which was provided to you, um, as well as a somewhat revised proffer statement. For your package tonight, of course, the, the entire original addendum, um, has, has been provided to you. Staff has made some minor, uh, or we're recommending some, some minor adjustments to the proffer statement, um, the revised proffer statement that was submitted. Um, I, I think at this point it would be appropriate for the commissioners to, uh, you know, hear perhaps a summary from the applicant as to the additional materials that they have provided. And, um, appropriate point, we could look at the proffer statement.
Okay. Any commissioner have any questions for Ms. Thornton?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do.
Go ahead.
So i- if you could, um, just sort of, I'm still not totally clear on the GWAP. So is it that none of the zoning standards apply to the GWAP? And they're all, any standards that we have are in the application and or proffers? For example, does our county lighting standard apply to this proposal? And then I have a follow-on question.
Um, yes, I believe it does. I mean, other than the, the points at which the language for the plan development mixed, mixed use district, um, contemplates that the applicant, um, submit additional or different, you know, standards for your review, um, our ordinance would apply, I believe. Mr. Lin, may I comment on that? Eric, do you, do you have a, a comment on that? Am I?
Uh, Sandra, I, I don't have any comment on that. I, I don't have any knowledge on it either, I'm afraid.
Well, okay, so, I mean, that's an important thing to know. And I'll just, and, um, I know the applicants are here. And just before we start, I just want to just say that, you know, this is what I'm saying and all this is, it's nothing, not being, you know, it's not directed at you personally. You guys have been very gracious with your time. And so, um, I'm just trying to understand the parameters of the GWAP. Because I don't, if, if I don't understand it, um, you know, I, it, it may be also that others don't understand it. So a specific example is they've proffered, uh, some verbiage on lighting, which is below, it doesn't meet the standard of our lighting ordinance. And so what I would like to know is, does this then supplant the lighting ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, uh, and Commissioners, I think, if, if that would be an error, if that, if that is correct, and I apologize, I didn't catch that. I mean, in the plan mixed use development, um, ordinance language, um, there is a provision regarding outdoor lighting criteria, and it refers to the exterior lighting section of the supplementary district regulations of our ordinance. So, um, we certainly would not want to accept a proffer that, um, contemplates something less, uh, stringent than what our ordinance already provides for.
Okay. And then, and then again, these are general questions. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, part of these questions is why I was, you know, looking forward to our work session on the GWAP generally. Um, the other question I have is, so we have an application, and there are things, uh, that the applicant says they're going to do in their application, but, but they're not proffered. So for instance, uh, age restricted units. So I, I see age restricted units in the application, but I don't see it in the proffers. So is it that if it's in the application, then it's enforceable by us, us, us being the county? Or is it that kind of what we've learned on some of these other things, that what's put in the application is kind of not really enforceable? Um, so, so what's the read on that? So if, if it says age restricted in the application, does that need to be in the proffers in order for that to be enforceable?
I believe it would be. I mean, as a, as a extra insurance, I mean, we generally have a, a statement that the application is a, considered a controlling document. But I think that, um, if there are aspects of the application, um, that which you would want to ensure are part of the, the project as it goes forward, um, if it's approved, then it would be safest to have it proffered. I believe.
Jason, I agree with that. Uh, I certainly think it, it goes a, a good way to, to say, as, as Josh suggested, I think a few weeks ago with regard to another SUP, that it's helpful, uh, to have a general statement that the applications, uh, that the, that the project will be in substantial accord with the application. But if you want it, but if you want to be sure that it's enforceable, I would, I would add that to the proffer.
Eric, so you're saying in our proffer statement, right? That's what I remember from last time, that the proffer statement should have a line that says that, you know, that the project will be in substantial conformance, whatever the legal, legal weenie languages, um, that it'll be, uh, a proffer line would be that the, the project would be in substantial conformance with the application.
Sure. But if you'd like to avoid getting into the weeds with a court about what substantial means and, you know, how far are we allowed to deviate from the application, then it's, it's just good to be very clear, uh, about, uh, particular things from the application that you want to incorporate in there.
Okay, thank you. And again, those weren't, that's just, those are general questions about any GWAP and, uh, application, any other application that comes before us. So thank you.
Good. Any other questions from any other commissioners? Well, I have one, and maybe Sandra, you, Josh, or Eric can help me. Anything that's put in the GWAP area, anything that's not in the application and or in the proffers, because the county has, uh, has accepted that area as a particularity, is it automatic they must comply irregardless whether it's in their proffers or their application?
Are, are you speaking of the language from the PDM regulations and the ordinance?
Yeah. So we have a GWAP area that we've declared, and we have certain building standards, and we have certain grooming standards that, that we've, we have declared for that area. You with me so far?
I think so.
So if, if something is omitted in the application of applicant and or in its proffers because they, they are doing it in GWAP area, would they not have to comply?
If, if it's language, are you, are you thinking of language from the plan itself or from, or, or in ordinance language? If it's just, if you're thinking of, of aspirations that are stated in the plan document, then I think that they would not necessarily be held to that unless we, you know, have, have it, you know, again, as part of the proffer, part of the application.
So, so try it this way. There's a set of standards for GWAP area, correct? You agree with me, Sandra?
Well, I think, and I know Mr. Yancey's, it was speaking and he's muted, but just, and I'll reply while he's unmuting. I think that was some of our confusion, um, with, regarding this application initially. Um, the standards that had been drafted, and we may be speaking of the same ones, there had been a set of standards that were drafted and were not adopted.
Okay, that's, that's where I'm going. So there, the GWAP plan has not been adopted by the county, so the compliance to GWAP is not enforceable unless we put it in the proffers, correct? Or we put it in their conditions?
Um, Mr. Brooks, Chairman Brooks, I, I think it may be helpful for Sandra to restate what she was just saying, because she's, she's alluding to the, the answer that you need to have. One relates to the planning document that was adopted. The other relates to development standards that follow that plan that were not adopted. And then the last is those standards that have been enacted that are part of the zoning code or part of the code of ordinances, right?
In, in addition to that, Chairman Brooks, I believe, and Mr. Hutcherson may confirm this, um, the, um, the whole GWAP concept is based on certain assumptions and also certain standards and conditions that all developers, uh, builders in the GWAP area would adhere to. If there was a deviation, it is my understanding, uh, they would go before the ARC, Architectural Review Committee, and make a determination of whether or not they would present their case in support of anything that would be majorly different from the GWAP outline. Correct, Mr. Hutcherson?
That is correct. Not only that, I believe that, uh, the applicant has already stated that he would conform to the GWAP standards.
And that is correct as well.
And he's done that in writing.
Okay. Well, maybe I missed that. Show, tell me where I can find that in these proffers that.
Well, I, I think there's another question too, uh, Chairman Brooks, and that's what I heard is we haven't adopted standards yet. And, uh, the language in the GWAP right now is fairly sparse. So there are, you know, we don't really have design standards, per se. And it sounds like they're exempt from some of the normal standards, so.
Well, I, I think that standards, as I said, I think this was, was some of the, the confusion, uh, maybe just because there had been draft documents circulating, and I think this created some of the confusion on the part of the applicants. I don't want to speak for Mr. Mark and Tony, but I believe they had seen some of the draft standards, design guidelines and, and those types, design guidelines, signage, landscaping, those types of standards, um, which ultimately they had been drafted and ultimately they weren't adopted. And, uh, language in the ordinance itself for the PDM district contemplates that each applicant will submit to you, um, or to the county, but to you for your consideration, their proposed, um, design guidelines and standards, um, so that, you know, with the idea that there would be flexibility, um, in the design of the projects, um, in the, within the guardrails of the, the GWAP goals. So they, we, we don't have, I mean, there are some requirements in the ordinance of, of elements that they need to submit. That was part of what was missing earlier. Um, things that they needed to submit for evaluation and comment. Um, there are certain standards, as I said, I mean, the, the minimum, um, they're not exempt from adhering to the, the outdoor lighting, uh, regulations included in other parts of our ordinance, the landscape requirements that are included in our, that are sort of minimum standards for projects in, um, these PDM districts. So, um, but there's not a, a single set of sort of, uh, just one, two, three, you know, set of standards for the PDM district. Some of it was to allow them flexibility, um, to be assessed, uh, by the county. You know, for, to assess their, their application, their proposal, um, to, to provide for some flexibility. I believe that was the, the goal of the way the regulations were ultimately adopted.
Is there any, so, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I, you know, I, I just think we should, I mean, this has been in, I mean, basically, you know, we're in a situation where we have roughly a fifth of the county with, with really no standards. You know, very minimal. And then we're in a position where we have to review every single application and make sure they have everything that, that should be there, that, that should just be automatic for everyone else. And so I've, I've never liked that. And so anyways, it's, it is what it is, but it doesn't seem like we've set a very high bar.
Any other questions from any other commissioners? Uh, if the applicant is on board, please state your name and your position. And, um, you have, uh, seven, eight minutes to give a summary or try to answer in some questions based on what the staff has stated and commissioners.
Hey, John, there you are. Yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to get my video up. It's not necessarily working. Um, just want to thank the county for the opportunity to speak on, on our behalf, obviously, and, uh, and provide some of the questions and to answer some of the questions that you may have had. Um, I, I'll give you a quick statement and I'll.
Hey, John?
Yes, sir.
Go back again, if you don't mind. State your name, your position with the company.
John Markantoni, uh, Signature Series Development Member LLC. To, and Bob Dudley's also online with us as well. Um, so I'll, I'll go straight forward into a statement, and then I can get back and answer some of the questions you all have presented and, uh, go from there. Uh, again, thank you for allowing us to speak and, and thank you for the extension you provided to our COVID issues and of getting the required information back to you. Uh, Signature Station is currently an approved commercial residential project. That is part of the GWAP, as you had mentioned, which is now as presented in full conformance with the GWAP, which we have updated and through this rezoning requesting removal of restrictions that have held up the project for many years. We've updated our plan to include an internal roadway network as VDOT compliant, included a concept plan designating specific areas for specific types of commercial and residential uses along with our GDP, an open space plan which protects environmentally sensitive areas along with a utility plan. We updated our fiscal analysis, which highlighted a need for affordable senior housing, which we revised to accommodate, uh, our plan to include age restricted senior living apartments. As the example, uh, Germana Heights Apartments has a sixty-plus person waitlist. Our consultant restudied the project, updating impacts to schools and county services at full buildout of both townhomes and apartments, which we expect would be a five to six-year buildout. The net impact to the county for just the residential component is a negative three thousand dollars annually. This does not take into account any commercial component, which is why our consultant provided a small retail fast food restaurant as part of the study to exemplify that the development would then produce positive gains in the county in excess of twenty-four thousand dollars annually. Our fiscal analysis does not include our financial proffer of three hundred thousand dollars, which will offset any negative impact that could be possible. This would be paid to the county once seventy-five percent of the townhomes are completed. We are also proffering restriction, the guidelines that will guarantee the architectural aesthetics that will be held to a higher standard than what exists today in the corridor. These guidelines include the architectural landscaping signage and lighting guidelines on top of what the county already requires. And lastly, we're also proffering any additional traffic analysis that may be required to accommodate any new commercial businesses as agreed with VDOT. So getting back to the question on that Jason Capella had concerning lighting, Jason, the intent was to meet or exceed the county's requirements. In addition, uh, the, the proffer, if, if there's a proffer required for the age restricted senior apartments, we have no problem including that in our proffer statement. Um, as far as the guidelines that we provided in our proffer, the really intent there was to accommodate the air, the draft guidelines that were in the original plan that were never adopted, but we wanted to include those in the plan because we are in agreement with those guidelines. If you guys have any other questions beyond that, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant?
Hey, John, did you get the letter from the Lake of the Woods?
There I am.
Hey, how are you?
Sorry about that. Not I, mission. Um, I did not get a letter from the Lake of the Woods. No, I'm not aware of one. Okay.
I think that was sent out today, wasn't it, Sandra?
Sandra? Hello?
Sorry, uh, last evening. It, it was sent last night.
Was, was John included on that?
Actually, you know, I, you know, I think I did fail to send that to him. John, do you have access to email now?
I do.
All right. I'll, I'll send it now. I apologize.
John, I, I do have one question, if I may, Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, you indicate in there that you're going to provide the three hundred thousand dollar proffer, uh, once seventy-five percent of the units, uh, I guess have been sold. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, why seventy-five percent? What does that mean as seventy-five percent?
That, that, that essentially covers any possible negative impact that can occur with the county based on how the fiscal analysis.
No, no. Why, why wait, uh, for seventy-five percent? What's the seventy-five percent mean? Is that the total units? Is it the townhouses?
Oh, it, it's seventy-five percent of the townhomes.
It's not the apartments?
No.
Would you be amenable as a following question to doing that at fifty percent?
The, uh, that proffer was really based on the analysis and how we attained our, our financials going forward. Um, going back and, and just saying fifty percent, it would take some study and analysis. So I wouldn't really be able to answer that right now. Um, you know, the way we looked at it, the apartments being a senior age restricted, uh, component would not have any impact to the county, as everyone was concerned with the townhouses may have an impact going forward. And that was the reason why had that was developed in that fashion. I think fifty percent may not be, uh, uh, like I said, I'd have to go back and study it, but that was really based on how the impacts were, how they came forward as we built out the development, especially with the townhomes.
Yeah, I understand it's a revenue flow issue. Thank you.
So let me, let me follow up a little bit with that, John. Um, you're not inclined to, um, drop the percentage for the proffers. And before you actually, let me tell you where my thoughts going. Three hundred thousand dollars in the building trade right now, it's not going to. It's not going to do much with the building materials going, and I'm just worried about how long it's going to take you to build out. And what would three hundred thousand dollars do ten years from now?
Well, we see that as still a pretty substantial proffer. You know, building, building materials have historically always gone come up, have gone up. There is a bit of a roller coaster there with, I'm sure at some point there will be a tipping point, but we don't anticipate that really affecting the build out.
So so the building materials, based on what I read today, have gone up anywhere from thirty to sixty three percent. Over the last twelve months, and that's not going to affect your build out at sixty three percent?
It it there, you know, if we, uh, of course, it's going to have some impact, but there there's other ways to to bring in, hopefully bring it in a little more efficiently. But at this point, it would be hardly, it would be very difficult to speculate because we would be, if if we were approved today. We wouldn't be building any homes for approximately a year, so the market could drastically, you know, either go up, go down, or the materials could come down. I mean, they're right now, they seem to be artificially inflating and and going up at a rate that really has no justification.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I I guess, uh, my real question was was associated with timing. I mean, how the county uses that three hundred thousand dollars. Is going to be up to the Board of Supervisors to make a determination on. But if it is applied to first responders, et cetera, that. Activity doesn't happen overnight. You know, if I'm correct and, uh, Josh, correct me. It costs in in excess for, uh, say, one deputy a hundred thousand dollars. Per year to bring them on with everything that they need. Uh, again, that doesn't happen overnight. You move seventy five percent in. We still have the existing resources that had to have to cover that increase. Uh, and I was thinking about moving that up so that the the system can move a little faster to to obtain the coverage.
Point well taken. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I I mean, I have a slew of comments. I I'm I don't get the sense that. Not from the applicant at all. I I just don't get the sense that the commission wants to hear them, honestly. I mean, you know, my assessment and, you know. And I'll just read you something here. From the, the, you know, from the Germana Wilderness. Which is supposed to be a place to live, work, and play with a higher standard of design and development, which is self-contained. So, you know, I think elements of their. Proposal, they did a nice job, you know, but. You know, we we granted a rezoning with stricter requirements than we're doing the GWAP. And so it's like. It, you know, and this isn't, again, this isn't that against the applicants, but it's like, I I don't get it. You know, and I voted for this thing. And and we have no design standards. And it it just seems from my point of view, like. The whole GWAP. You know, first of all, as I said, I don't think we all really understand how it works. But, you know, we're in a position where project by project, we have to figure out what's what's. The right answer. And I just, I don't understand the whole thing. It's the whole, and it's, this isn't directed again at the applicants and you guys just, again, they reached out and presented their project and. I feel like they've been sort of shaken around a little bit. But, you know, this thing ain't ready for prime time. You know, it's like half formed, it's not finished. You know, a bunch of the stuff that's supposed to be done isn't. And here we are, you know, with this project and the next one. We don't, you know, so it's just the whole, I find the whole thing disappointing. The the, and I'll, but I'll hit a couple of things here that, you know, the outdoor lighting, like the language here is. Is less than what's in the lighting standard. So, you know, our lighting standard talks about, all this talks about is keeping lights from adjacent properties and roads. Well. You know, it doesn't have anything about full cutoff, dark sky, you know, a lot of the features that are in our lighting standard. You know, I, this to me, all, you know, to me, it seems less than what's in the lighting standard, so it doesn't really seem like a proffer to me. You know, the the discussion about the money, I mean, that's that's fine. I mean. Good, good for you all for proffering it, um, but I don't see the age restriction proffered in here. And, um, you know, just overall, I I, I mean, I could go through a list of things that the person from, uh. The Lake of the Woods had some great, great suggestions. I mean, for one, I mean, I thought this was a great suggestion, and John, you might think this is a great suggestion too, but. One of the things was getting, uh, conduits put under the ground now for the fiber for the county. So that when the county is ready to pull the fiber to all your units, the the conduit is already there. I mean, that's a great idea. That's cheap. You know, that would make all your, your people there would make them super happy. It would cost everyone less money in the long run.
We anticipate doing that, Jason.
Yeah.
That would be, I mean, for hot, we're going to have some sort of high speed, hopefully with the county service at that point. Um, but that that's.
Well, they're.
New development will have to have that.
Well, but they're talking about, you know, there there really isn't high speed out there right now, or or maybe there's a service providing it, but this is, this is empty conduits. For the high speed.
Currently Comcast and FiOS are on Route three, so there is high speed there. Uh, we are open to talk with the county with their high speed, uh, service. We'd love to work with that as well. And and we anticipate those conduits are going to be part of our road plan when we install them.
Well, I mean, that gets you through the roads. I mean, it, I don't know if that gets you all the way to the units.
Oh, absolutely.
In theory. Particularly in these apartments and your utility rooms, you, you know, it seems like you'd have conduits run out to a central point that. You know, you don't have to dig the roads up. I mean, you know, John, I mean.
Absolutely.
But I thought.
In this day and age, we'd have to have that. I mean, that would be, that that was really something that was really in our tent. That was what would be there.
Yeah, so, you know, there's some some, uh, language in here about, uh, pedestrian paths to the commercial. You know, which maybe you would. I don't know.
That's part of our GDP, which we proffered, which there's sidewalks. I was just getting, this is three pages long, so I wasn't able to read it all just quickly.
Yeah.
Our VDOT standards require most of the things that's asked in this, in this, uh, this document, but like I said, I I I don't have. If I could read that quick to get through it, but.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
Pass and and there will be sidewalks. GWAP requires sidewalks on both sides of the streets. I mean. We, our intent is to meet every fast of the GWAP and plus what we proffered for what was not adopted. That was our whole point. We want to make sure that was the point to to make sure those guidelines were in place. And that's like Sandra had said, there was some confusion upfront that they were not adopted at that point. And that's the whole reason why we included them in our proffer. And like I said, the the senior apartments, that was a misstep on our part, that will definitely go into our proffer statement.
Okay. Well, so so, John, I appreciate that, and that's, that's really all I have. I mean, just, I don't want to pick on these, these folks. I mean, they've been dealing with this for a while. But I mean, you know, how are we going to figure this out for every single project? You know, I mean, it's just. That's, that's all I have.
Sandra, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So just for clarity and maybe for the commissioners and whoever else may be listening. Signature Series already has an approved, uh, project, correct?
Yes.
And this, uh, application that's before us now is asking for some changes in the approved project. And the approved project was before GWAP, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So do we go with the previous guidelines for this? Partial of land on the original application, or do we use the application that's in front of us for the guidelines?
Since they are seeking a a new rezoning, it's a new case. So it's a a new rezoning to the planned mixed use development district, so we need to apply the current. Regulations and.
Standards to it.
Standards to the, to this new case.
So if the. I'm sorry.
No, I was just, this is the first technically project governed under the GWAP.
Yes.
Right.
So this is, this is the standard for what follows.
Or could be the standard. So. So what, what, where I was going with my thought, if this is denied, they they can just go back to their previous. Because they applied again does not negate them the 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 already approved, uh, project, does it?
That that's correct. It does not. They they would still have their previously approved project.
And that would not have to be according to GWAP standards. That's the way I understand it, right?
Uh, correct. I mean, as they, if, as they come in for for building permits and whatnot, I mean, we'll be looking at, you know. Whatever conditions were associated with that prior approval. And then that in conjunction with their current regulations would, uh, dictate how those. Plans are approved or reviewed and and approved.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from? Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, I'd like to address a few questions that were posed earlier. That I think I can elaborate a little bit more on now, uh, if if now is the appropriate time.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, the first relates to, uh, Mr. Capella's question regarding the lighting ordinance. Uh, I needed to pull that up and refer to it. And it it's about three pages long, so I I can't say that I've really done a. Uh, an in-depth review of our lighting ordinance, which I understand is, uh, section seventy six twenty three. But I don't see any contradictions between the lighting ordinance and the proffers that are included in this. Um, Mr. Capella can set me straight on that if he sees a contradiction, but at least I haven't seen any contradictions. What I do see is that, uh, the proffer here establishes just a lower standard, a more. Uh, watered down standard from what our lighting ordinance says. And so because of that, the more restrictive conditions would, uh, control. So they would be bound by, uh, proffers relating to lighting, and they would also be bound, uh, by section seventy six twenty three. With regard to GWAP. My understanding of GWAP, that that whole phrase can can refer to the GWAP portion. Uh, the GWAP supplement to the comprehensive plan. Uh, it can refer to, uh, the the GWAP application standards for rezonings. Uh, which are unofficial, but that this planning commission can still use and has. Um, and it can also refer to ordinances that refer to the GWAP plan. Um, and and that portion of our zoning ordinance that refers to GWAP doesn't contain very exact design standards. Uh, Sandra, Josh, feel free to jump in and correct me if I get any of this wrong. But the most, um, the most elaborate standards for GWAP are those composed, are those that are in the comprehensive plan. And so the comp plan, uh, is something where the planning commission, uh, the Board of Supervisors. Um, uh, certainly, uh, has a very legitimate interest and authority. To, uh, consider and evaluate when it's granting an SUP or a rezoning application and when it's imposing proffers. Uh, but neither the GWAP portion of the plan of the comp plan nor any other portion of the comp plan is legally binding. Or or how do I put this? It it's not self-executing. You don't, you don't cite someone for a violation of the comp plan. You you don't come after, uh, an applicant after it's approved for violation of the comp plan. Rather, the comp plan is something you take into account when the application is being considered. Uh, so if there's any portion of the GWAP plan, uh, that is not proffered. Then it is, then it's not binding in, uh, in a rezoning after the fact. And again, Sandra, Josh, jump in and and correct me if if you understand differently on any of that.
Quick, quick question, Eric. When you say the. The GWAP in the comp plan, you're talking the Germana Wilderness Area Plan, right?
Yes.
All right, so like. You know, let let's not call those standards, please. I mean, you know. I mean, seriously. I mean, it's comp plan language. So I I just, they don't qualify as as standards. They're goals.
Yeah, and that's kind of the point I'm making.
Standards, the standards are what you put in place to achieve the goals.
Right.
And so again, I don't want to belabor this for the applicants. I mean, I I feel like we should have some additional proffers for them. I I'm still not totally happy with the whole thing. And, um, you know. I I think we as a, as a county. We just have a lot of work to do on this. I mean, this is just. It's just something that that can, a truck can drive through. And and it's incumbent upon us to figure it all out and put the details in the plan. You know, o- otherwise. You know, we, we don't have any really, uh, authority over it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just just reviewing some of the the language, again, going back to the plan development mixed use, uh, regulations in the the ordinance. There are some, there are general guidelines, there are some general standards, but I think the, the. The guidelines that we have, I guess, continually referred to as we looked at the this application. Um, the design, uh, guidelines are, you know, are left up to the, um, applicant to propose for consideration. As are the signage criteria are to be established as part of the development plan. Landscaping established as part of the development plan, so, um, I think the the specifics of of the. Of any particular development proposal, I mean, the the actual, the aesthetics of it, the, you know, architectural features. You know, those types of things are not prescribed in our, in our ordinance or the standards that are contained in the ordinance right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess. I don't know. I'm just wondering. Uh, Josh, this is for you, being new planning director. And, um, talking hypothetically here, but serious hypothetical. If we were to approve what's presented in front of us and even help with some of these proffers. Would we be setting the standard what we wanted for GWAP, um, in in future applicants in in a sort of a way? Backhandedly?
Oh, Mr. Brooks. Chairman Brooks, the typical term of art would be that you're setting the precedent. Um, which implies that you have an expectation or a standard, but it's, it wouldn't be setting the standard per se.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
So I appreciate you fixing my, um, my, um, verbiage there.
Well, the, if I may, the rea- the reason I, the rea- and not to be too picky over, but the reason I say that is. A precedent is an indication, but it is not a a ruling standard. And I think that's important because a precedent gives an indication of where you maybe want to, maybe wanting to go. But it is not necessarily a broadly applied standard, and I and I think that's an important distinction.
So let me try it this way then. A precedent anywhere in the county for anything is not a favorable thing for the county to do. Is that correct?
No, a precedent. No, sir, I'm not, I'm not sure that I would say that that's true. I, a precedent. No, sir, I'm not, I'm not sure that I would say that that's true. I, a precedent is the first action that uh precedes subsequent actions. And so it's an indication of what your expectations are and what your policies may be. And of course, those can pertain to the unique characteristics of individual properties in areas of the county that are quite different, maybe even from their neighbor around the corner, depending on their circumstances. Um, I would not say that sets a negative, um, a ne, a negative example or a negative um, condition.
Okay.
Precedents, I mean, no, and, and I know where you're going. Yes, sir, and I, if I may, I, I know where you're going with some of that, which is that a precedent can be held as a negative example of um, a variation from what is expected to be the standard of the policy. And so the precedent creates this kind of new expectation because there's been a, a variance or some, some new direction that people are headed. And so people will often say, well, that's set a precedent for a new direction. Um, and I think that's very true. So I, I don't mean to disagree with you at all, but I, I do want to, I do want to say a, a precedent, sometimes you have to make the first decision. And it, that is the first decision, and it, it sets the, it does set the precedent.
Okay, uh, uh, you go, you answered well, and you don't have to apologize ever. Um, I'm, I'm trying to work through this. Any other commissioners got any questions, comments, considerations?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, I think this thing goes back to the original question that Jason asked. And while you have the PDM guidelines, the fact is that the standards that are specified in our ordinances should apply. And Sandra could, uh, can you answer that?
So before she answers that, let me ask you this, just as commissioner, commissioner, do you think those standards have been met?
You know, other than the uh obvious one on uh, on the lighting that is sort of watered down. Uh, I mean, I'm not sure that I understand Eric's explanation of the fact that he doesn't see a problem when there's, they're not compatible totally. Uh, I think that the uh the applicant has done what he can to meet the standards uh set forth in our zoning ordinances. And those should apply regardless of what the guidelines are in the uh three separate areas under the uh GWAP that are in the comp plan. So I mean, uh, as far as the applicant making a statement that he conforms with all the uh uh standards that are applicable within the uh ordinances in the county. I mean, that's to me, that's, that's fairly simple.
All right, Mr. Yance, you had your hand up twice. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I can't speak for Josh or for Sandra, but I think uh both will tell you in a development of this nature and type, uh, there are things that occur as uh the development uh evolves that will potentially have other al- alternative issues that need to be changed. Therefore, um, my, my point I'm trying to make is uh, I don't think everything is etched in stone from the very beginning of anything. I, I think it's a work in progress. Uh, there are numerous external factors. Uh, some of which are the county doesn't have control of, nor does the developer have control of. So, you know, I think there's an element of both parties working in good faith effort to to reach a uh solution that is acceptable to the developer as well as to the county. And I think um, that is, I think we've seen that on behalf of Signature Station and the number of times that we have uh had the opportunity to vet this um, uh, particular project. And I certainly uh concur with uh Mr. Hutchison that other than the lighting uh issue, which I don't think uh is an issue that can't be resolved to satisfaction of the county's needs, that um, you know, they are in compliance with what we've asked them to do. So therefore, I, I think we need to proceed on.
Any other questions, comments, or considerations? Members of the commission, what's your pleasure here? What do we want to do?
I make a motion that we approved uh the application to forward to the board of supervisors for consideration.
I would second that with an amendment that it includes the proffer on the aged uh portion.
Say, George, you're gonna have to make that motion to uh sustain that if you want it. You can't amend it on the second, you can amend it on a, on a movement.
Okay. My bad.
So do you accept that?
I accept that.
Mr. Chair, we will need to have that noted in writing.
Yeah, hey, um, I don't know if we can have this discussion. I, I mean, I gotta be hon, I.
Hold on a second. It's removed in second for uh approval. We can go to discussion before we vote. Go, Jason.
Yeah, I mean, so honestly, I am not clear at all whether the lighting standards apply or not. I mean, I, it's just clear as mud. And so like, you know, if our goal here is just to get developers to meet our ordinance, I don't understand why we have a GWAP. Because if we didn't have a GWAP, that would be a given. And now we have a GWAP and we're just, we're, we're all clapping our hands and saying, wow, uh, they're meeting the ordinance. So I, I don't understand this whole discussion. But, uh, you know, to the extent that you want them to meet the ordinance. Well, hold on, just last thing.
Okay.
Just last thing, to the extent that you, that you truly want them to meet the ordinance, I would suggest that someone add conditions for the sections of the ordinance that they should meet, because I haven't heard clearly that they can be held to the standard or not. I've, I've heard, I heard Eric, but then I heard someone else say something else, and I'm not clear at all on, on what standards they're, they're really held to without the proffers stipulating them.
I, I believe that the general site layout guidelines that are set forth in the plan development mixed-use district will apply regardless of whether they proffer them or not. There, as I said, there, there, there are some, there are some guidelines in the ordinance itself. And so as I referenced a, a bit ago, as far as outdoor lighting, it, the, the plan mixed-use development district simply references the exterior lighting section um contained in our zoning ordinance. So that, that as a minimum for lighting would be applied during the plan review process once site plans are submitted. Now, I think if there's if there's discomfort with the language in the proffer statement, I think you, you may want to, you know, sort of call, call that out, you know, for uh the board's attention or, or suggest that the um applicant revise their proffers before um the board um goes to public hearing.
Okay, Jason, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Capel.
No, I'm, I'm done. I, I honestly feel like the applicants have been beaten up enough over the last three or four months. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not in favor of this project. It, it's, it's really got nothing to do with John and Bob, their folks, you know, they wanted, you know, they're, they're doing their thing. But from the county perspective, you know, that, this is not the project, but this GWAP right now is, is at best a D. And I, I hope over the next months, we can, you know, get this together because it's just very confusing. And I don't, I don't hear anyone with any confidence saying that they know what the rules are. I hear I believes and I think and, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, like, we, we should know. Particularly with this, this next big development coming. I mean, we, we need to get our act together.
That, that's, that's, you kind of got in front of me with that statement there. I, I think what, what has happened unfortunate to the applicant is their pre, previous approval was done before GWAP. They didn't get it done. GWAP comes in here now, and I'm just, I'm just summarizing and, and changes the game in that area. They're trying to, to accommodate by getting something off the ground so they don't have vacant ground standing there and getting something done. But on the other hand, you know, yesterday gas was two dollars a gallon, today it's two eighty-nine. You gotta pay the price when you get there, I guess. I, I, I don't know. We, we do have a motion on the floor that states that we would um approve this project with amendment accepted that we would put the uh age restriction in there. Um, so it's been moved in second. I would say we will go to the vote and I would ask that um
Mr. Chair, if, if, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but any, any amendment to the proffers would be an amendment to an ordinance and so, or, or to a, to an ordinance under consi, consideration by the commission. And so it'd have to be in writing. Um, I don't know if that's something staff can put together in the interim before the vote.
Yeah, we've done that before. If you can draft it up and send it out to us.
So Eric, is that something that you would like for me to do, an email? It would just, so this would be a, a recommended addition to the proffer statement?
Yes, that it's essentially, it would be implementing Mr. Hutchinson's uh proposed amendment to the proffers.
Ho, hold on a second here. Um, Eric, forgot who I was talking to. Didn't you just say that that would automatically be, be put in anyway because of they would have to fall in those standards, which says that, I mean, I don't care that we get it sent us, to us, but if we're gonna do that, then we might go back to what Mr. Capel said and put a whole bunch more in there. That's the only concern I would have, that we, we're gonna pick one and move, but continue on. Ms. Thornton, can you get that out to us? And we will put this on hold until you get that out and everybody says they received it, we're going on to something else. How about that?
Okay, I, I will do that.
So I would ask this, um, Mr. Gillespie, are you prepared to help with continuation of SUP Redfish Solar? Or do we just need to go into a, a recess for fifteen, twenty minutes?
Um, Mr. Chair, I, I would prefer that Sandra speak to that. She's been working more directly with the applicants on this particular case especially. Um, I would be happy to go the other direction if you want me to uh, to work on the uh, the change to the language for the.
What about C for Mountain View? Can you do that one?
Sure, what, I'll be happy to introduce Mountain View and um, an update on that.
Okay, if you can do that, then what we'll do is I'll just take a little chairman prerogative here so we can move along. We'll skip over B, A and B, and we'll ask you to help us with uh C here.
Sure. So uh, Mr. Chair, for the sake of time, because I, I knew the, the intent was to have an expedient meeting. The uh, the purpose of continuing this item for discussion by the commissioners at this evening's meeting was to be able to consider additional conditions um that could be proposed by the applicant or considered for uh, proposal to the applicant by the commission. Um, furthermore, there was an expectation that the applicant might have a change in status for their application between the last meeting and this meeting before the commission um meets again in public hearing on the sixth to take this item up. And so generally, I will, I will say that we have been in communication with the applicant. Um, they had associated individuals with their case uh who were uh interested in the operation of the proposed institutional facility by special use permit who indicated that they may not need a special use permit or that the applicant might withdraw the case. And that has not occurred, as in the case has not been withdrawn. And it's been communicated to us as staff that the um, the applicant will not make that decision until closer to the May sixth meeting of the commission. So at this time, they have not proposed any additional conditions. They have not consented to the conditions that have been discussed in the past. And um, Sandra and I have not spoken very specifically, but I, I don't believe we have additional conditions to recommend to you um, different from our last me, your last meeting, excuse me.
Thank you, sir. Any commissioners? Say it again, Mr. Hudson, I'm sorry.
Is, do we have any time limits associated with them uh taking action for us to make a decision?
Sure. So uh, as I related at the April fourth meeting, um, excuse me, the April first meeting, the planning commission has under state law one hundred days from the time that there's a hearing to make a recommendation on the request. So we tracked that forward, and I, I'm not gonna do the math again today, but it took you to the middle of May. So if, if the planning commission does not make a recommendation at your May sixth meeting, then you begin to get to ninety days and um, within the one hundred days allotted to the commission. However, the applicant has uh clearly understands that and has indicated that if there are some discussions in the period between now and the May sixth meeting, um, where additional conditions might be discussed outside of a public hearing, but and essentially uh negotiated or addressed, that they may request that your uh recommendation be deferred for a period sufficient uh for them to continue that are their discussions and their internal consideration of potential conditions. So that essentially would allow, with their consent, that would allow that case to be continued for a further period of time. If after a hundred days, however, um, they did not request a deferral or a continuance, and the commission had not acted, then we would need to discuss with the board scheduling the item. Um, and under state law, if it's not been given a recommendation at all, then the recommendation of the commission is considered to be um assent or approval to the request as it was proposed.
So essentially, we make this an agenda item for the May sixth uh meeting.
Correct, with, that's correct, sir. So it, it, which it is, and that was the motion and the decision made at the May sixth meeting was that you would gather tonight, make it an agenda item for discussion of any other potential conditions. Because some of those we had received somewhat late, uh, you know, in the, in the moment before the April first meeting. And so the decision that you made was to not take this up as a voting item until May sixth, but to put it on the agenda for this evening for any discussion of potential conditions without taking a vote on those conditions or making a recommendation.
Well, but at our last meeting, uh, it was our understanding that they were requested in writing after they indicated they wanted to pull uh, the application.
Uh, Mr. Hutchison, the, the specific comment about withdrawing the case did not come from the applicant, but from one of the other speakers. And uh, you will remember that at that meeting, the commission had already moved to continue this to the May sixth meeting.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, so the comments that were made after the business item, a, after the motion had carried were really somewhat irrelevant. And as a point of order, I did, I, I did indicate that the applicant would need to put any withdrawal in writing. Um, and we can relay some of the things that have occurred since then, but i- in effect, the applicant did not uh intend to withdraw, did not withdraw. So it is an active case. So it is an active case for your consideration. And again, you are correct, related to time. If by May 6th, there is not a clear action by the commission on the proposal as it's been made, or a request from the applicant to defer for a period of time and basically pause the clock, then we will get to 100 days before your second meeting in May.
Thank you, I understand.
Yep.
So it appears to me that all we have to do is just leave it on the May 6th agenda and move on. Is that what your understanding is, Mr. Gillespie?
Yes, sir. You know, as you said, it's your prerogative. If you, if you have other items you want to take up on those conditions and discuss tonight, you can. We have heard again from the applicant, no changes in their proposed conditions.
Okay. I don't think we received that email yet. So I didn't get it yet.
I'm still, I'm still working on it.
Mr. Chair, before, before we, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but before we go to the email that Sandra is considering, Sandra made a recommendation that I, I want to highlight what I think the purpose of, of that recommendation was. And as I, I, I think that it was apt. And that was any modification to the proffers would be one that we would want to discuss with the applicants. And the purpose of that, I mean, I'm elaborating into Sandra's reasoning here, but I, I can at least get into the state codes reasoning. The state code requires that any proffer would be voluntarily proffered by the applicant. So it's not something that we just get to impose. Now, there are situations where we can just impose our own conditions with certain SUPs, but this is not an SUP. This is, this is a rezoning. And, and so for, for those conditions to be imposed, I, I think we, if, if we want to go there, that there, there needs to be more substantial dialogue with the applicant to determine the voluntariness of those conditions.
Eric, I think, I think. Can I, can I interrupt, Hutch? I'm sorry. Are, are we talking about Mountain View right now or Signature Station?
I'm sorry, I, I should have been more clear. We're talking about Signature Station.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize.
Sorry, Hutch.
No sweat. Eric, I think that the applicant voluntarily, in his statement, went ahead and said he agreed with that. He said it was an oversight and he agreed with it.
I, I missed that.
Well, I, I have, I have kind of addressed that in the, in the email, so I'm going to go ahead and send it for you all to look at. And of course, Eric will, is, is getting it too. So, but yeah, I have acknowledged in the email that we may not require particular proffers. But we are recommending the addition. So that means, you know, recommending to the applicant, of course.
Should we reclarify with the applicant, this recommended proffer?
Well, hold on a second there, Ms. Hudson. I think what, Eric, listen, listen to this pretty intensely. I think what Eric is saying is that if, if, if we say we want this in the proffers and he says yes, it's not a a, 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 a offer up from him, it's a persuasion from us. So when we start persuading, it's not necessarily a proffer. It's more of, you can get this as a condition. And so it's a little, little legal type walk there. He may have missed it. And, and, and that's one thing, but the missing didn't come until we kind of stepped on it. And so that's what Eric is getting at. It's not saying that the applicant doesn't want it. Not saying the applicant won't even say, I agree to it. But the way it came about was more of a condition to his proffer or an addition to his proffer that he didn't genuinely give up first himself. That's kind of what I think he's, he's saying to us. I think, I think, why don't we suggest this? This motion has to live or die on its merits. Another motion could be made to push it up. And what you can do if the, if the applicant is actually truly wanting to do this, when it gets to the board level, they can address their proffer. You, you, does all the commissioners understand what I'm saying? We can leave it out and they can address it at the board levels. It, it keeps us from holding up everything for this. Because it goes to the board whether we approve it or we disapprove it.
Well, I got the email. I concur with it.
Okay. So Eric, because we got this email, you think we're legally sound by pushing this toward the way it's with the email? Because I didn't hear you saying that.
Yeah, I, I still think that we would be premature in, in taking our own vote on this without, without further dialogue with the applicant. I would, I would certainly invite Josh and Sandra's input into that, but that's, that's my, that's my dead instinct.
Can we do that?
Mr. Lansing.
With him on the, on the, on the, on the, on the Zoom?
Well, I, I think what, I think what you're missing, Mr. Hutchinson, is if you bring him back and say, we want you to do this on the Zoom, without them being having ample time to do it, it's non-consensual. It's, 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 it's just, it's, it's persuasive. I, I hear what you're saying. I think we can get there, but it's persuasion. You, you, you can't semi-suggest something, they do it and, and it becomes not coercion. It's sort of like any law saying, if you do this, we can do this for you. I mean, it's, it's just.
I, I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, but if, if I'm correct, the applicant's already stated on his own that it was an oversight and he'd, he'd agree included.
I agree with what you're saying, but it didn't, he didn't say that until after we pointed it out.
And the code requires that, or allows that proffers may be amended. I mean, generally up till the time just before the Board of Supervisors public hearing is called to order. So I think having, having heard your discussion and your, your opinions, you know, about this, I think if, as someone mentioned earlier, if the applicant is willing to make that amendment to their proffer statement, they have time to do that. And if not, the board, the board will be, they certainly will be, you know, privy to, you know, a summary of your discussion. And Mr. Johnson is present and, and has heard it as well. So they are aware, they will be aware of your concerns about the, the proffer.
If anyone would like, we can take a brief recess and I can call Mr. Latchney and get his thoughts on this.
Before you do that, Mr. Lansing, I have a question for Mr. Dudley. Mr. Dudley, can you tell the folks when you first submitted your first approach to the station to development?
2006.
George, you're going to have to repeat what you said. You kind of faded out.
I asked a question with Mr. Dudley devolves to the other members of the audience. When he first approached the county in reference to the development of Signature Station initially.
2006. Did you all hear that?
Yes.
And we do not have a problem with the elderly. I mean, not elderly. I'm sorry. I didn't even mean to say that. The age restricted, it was definitely an oversight. We wouldn't have put it in the corner of the plan if we didn't intend it. That was the one thing we knew we could put in there along with the townhouse. So we have no problem doing that between now and the board, or however you want to do it. We have no problem with that.
Okay, Mr. Yancy, tell us your reason for asking that question. I didn't hear it. I'm sorry. Mr. Yancy?
Yes, sir.
You said you will tell us the reason for asking that question?
Yeah, my point has been before various plant, senior planners, the county, since 2006, trying to get this project on level footing to get off the ground. You know, I think in true statement on my part, I commend them for their patience with us and with the process. And, you know, that's why I recommend that we forward this on to the supervisors for their review and adification at this time. That's a long period of time to be under scrutiny and being bounced around by various things. And I'm not sure that's good government, but at the same time, there are a lot of people in this meeting tonight are not at fault for that. And I don't want to point fingers. I'm just saying some predecessors had difference of opinions that were not conveyed in preliminary conversations. I'll leave it at that. I've said my piece. The commission has the privilege of voting up or down.
All right, so. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, one, one comment, please. So, so, you know, that's a little bit of a, I mean, I think, you know, what's occurred since they've tried to do this GWAP thing and now is, is unforgivable on the county side. But in 2006, you know, they proposed a plan that they couldn't execute. And it was approved. And now we're, now we're sitting here acting like when developers show up, that they're the experts. So I, you know, I don't think the county, you know, gets the blame for this project being, you know, submitted in 2006. I just think that's a really false description of what's occurred. And, but I do agree, Mr. Yancy, that this last several months has just been just not good at all for anyone, including the applicants. But to take it back to 2006, I mean, that, that's a little extreme and not a very accurate portrayal of the situation.
Mr. Chair, having heard what Mr. Mark and Tony said, I, I think that that's going to meet the state codes qualifications for, for voluntariness. The state code doesn't go into a great deal of detail. It just says that the conditions have to be voluntarily proffered by the applicant. And so I, I, I think that fits the bill.
Okay, so we're back to our motion and ready for the roll call vote. Based on the applicant's application in front of us, the motion is that we would approve and add the age requirement in there. And the applicant has agreed to put it in there. So I would ask for a roll call by Ms. Thornton, please.
Mr. Capel?
Nay.
Mr. Yancy? Aye, was that?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Mr. Brooks?
Nay.
Ms. Zelmaker?
Aye.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Aye.
Okay, the motion prevails three to two, goes to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, applicants. Thank you, commissioners. We're moving on if Ms. Thornton is ready for SUP 20-05.
All right, give me one minute to rearrange my materials.
Take your time. Don't get in a big hurry. We know you had it right on the plate there.
Well, I just, I, I don't, well, anyway, it, I'm, I'm just about there. Purpose, you have received, had your, had a presentation on this matter. We did not receive any additional public comments that the extended public comment period ended on, at the close of business on Tuesday, April 13. Back in February, I mean, after your original, you know, the first presentation from the, the Redfish representatives, you had asked staff to have some discussion with the applicants regarding the conditions that had been outlined in the original staff report. I did do that and I think there, there has not, you know, been an opportunity for any discussion of the summary memo that I prepared, you know, based on that first discussion with them. At, at their request, we did have another meeting with them yesterday, thinking that perhaps there, there might be some additional comments to address and there had not been. So the purpose of having this on the agenda tonight, as I said, was to allow some time for the commission to consider conditions that had been proposed, to consider the applicant's responses to those conditions prior to your taking action, which I, I believe is anticipated at least for the May 6th meeting. So with that, I just need to.
Well, she's trying to get her thoughts together. Is there, there a commissioner that has a, has not received that and having some concerns about the proposed information that we received and read? Red being color, not red as in reading?
You mean on the conditions?
Yes. She's got proposed follow-up conditions. She's got some redded items there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a general, just a general comment. So I, I, personally, I, I find this project to be fairly okay, pretty good. I like that they, you know, went the extra step and provided some photos of what it will look like when it's, you know, when the buffers are grown. I personally, I personally, a number, number of folks, folks know me in the county. I, I would be okay with this adjacent to my property. With just one, one note, I, I, as I said in the meeting before, I, I would like the chance to revisit the, the permit if they decide to have batteries. Because the, the, and I, I didn't see that. Did I miss something, Sandra?
No, you, no, you didn't. And we, I was going to mention that too as a summary, and I apologize that I didn't have the opportunity to prepare a sort of a supplemental, you know, written document for you to have at your, well, tonight. We did have discussion about that particular topic yesterday. So this memo that, that you have with the, some comments in, in red font was prepared at the end of February, as I said, after that very initial discussion with them related to. As I said, after that very initial discussion with them, um, related to, uh, proposed conditions. And then, um, we also had included in that the, uh, additional, you know, conditions that commissioners had submitted for consideration. But yesterday, and, and we had, at the staff level, you know, we had questioned, um, the, you know, I guess what I might characterize as some vagueness in the application about the potential for a battery energy storage, you know, installation in the future. Um, so we did discuss yesterday what, um, I felt, especially after your discussion at the last meeting, would be a, a condition to be considered that any, any development or installation of a battery storage facility would require an amendment to the special use permit. So we had discussed that with them, and they, they were in agreement with that.
Okay, good. And just for, just for future reference for the other commissioners, why, just, I just want to tell you why I think that's important. You know, the, the facility as it's proposed now is, is pretty quiet, like, there isn't really any machinery operating. I mean, the, you know, it's fairly, you know, it's just not, you know, there's not a lot of mechanical stuff going on. The introduction of a, of a battery, uh, building with heating and cooling, it's probably going to have some sort of protection for a potential battery leak. Um, there's, there's a number of things that go with the battery storage that, um, could potentially cause neighbors to, to not, or, or, you know, they would, I think some would have complaints with that noise, uh, depending on what sort of cooling units they have and, and, and how that all happens. So, I, I think, I'm bringing this up just so, because I know we're also talking about, um, uh, you know, potential ordinances. So, you know, the batting, battery storage, to me, is a little different animal than just, you know, a, a solar facility that, that's connected fairly straightforwardly to the transmission lines.
Is there any other comments? Go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to add to Mr. Capel's, um, comments. Another element of this that, um, I've learned is that, I gather if there is a, happens to be a fire, uh, facility or a, a fire vent with those batteries, the local fire company would have to have certain chemicals, uh, or suppression, um, abilities to put that fire out. Water is not, uh, a predominant firefighting element for batteries. So, you know, that's an additional cost for the county and for the locality at Mine Run, with the Mine Run Fire. And, um, I think that's a cost the applicant should be borrowing, um, as well in that reference. The other second thing I'd like to point out, I think also all of us have received from the Orange County Farm Bureau, several suggestions that they had made in reference to different things. And I think some of those have very strong merits that need to be incorporated as well.
Mr. Yancy, may I ask if you have, if there's specific, um, items there? Or would you like to see incorporated into a document for your next meeting? I'm just, the, the contents of- Mr. Yancy, you're muted.
Uh, one of the things, um, is that the, um, toxic materials used must be, uh, revealed to landowner and the county during the application process. Taxes should be structured so that all solar facilities are revenue positive through the lifespan. The, um, they agree with us in terms of the decommissioning bond should be reviewed every thirty, I mean, every three years. Uh, and that cost of reviewing should be borne by the applicant or any successors. And also, uh, any cost of any road damage should be borne by the applicant should, uh, it occur due to, uh, various trucking, uh, usage of roads and not the county.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Is there any other commissioner has a question or anything?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we discuss the decommissioning bond? Um, I see on here it has, uh, you know, one amount, and then in red, there's another one. Um, so what, what is the recommended amount on that?
Um, which page, Ms. Zellmacher, are you?
That's page three of the order.
Page three.
That, um, it says Redfish Solar will be required to provide the County of Orange with a bank letter of credit or an acceptable bond instrument of 1 million initially, to be amended every three-year period linked to the Consumer Price Index. And then in red, it has applicant question the amount asserting that 20,000 to 3,000 per megawatt is currently considered the average cost of decommissioning in view of the fact would be 6 million.
Yeah, so the, the, um, what's the, there enumerated is number one, that was the condition that had been originally, recommended in the staff report, the first staff report. And so, when I had discussed those conditions at, at your direction, when I discussed those conditions with the applicants, what's there in red was their response to that recommendation. Um, we did, uh, touch on that again yesterday, and, um, you know, I think that their, their response that is in your memo in red is, is still, you know, their, um, opinion. They believe that our recommended bond amount was too high. Given, given the size of this particular project.
So what are they recommending in their bond amount? What's their capital number?
If I may, this is Doug Carton with EDF Renewables. I believe the process that was contemplated and that we discussed was that we would have a third-party engineer, uh, develop that number, and that number would be renewed on, I thought it was a five-year basis, but it might be a, a three-year basis. But I didn't think the number is to company party engineer.
So, are you still there? Hello?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you go away? Okay, so, if you were to oppose the bond, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not your financial advisor, don't, don't, don't even think it. But if you were to oppose the bond, the cost of posting the bond for what you say, and the cost of the million-dollar bond is very minimal in, in cost. So, now if you got to put up the cash, I get where you're going. But for the bond, the, the cost is minimal for the bond and entity based on what I called, an insurance guy and said, what's, what would this bond cost me if I were to do this? Because it's really just an insurance instrument. You agree or disagree with me?
Well, I think, uh, I think proportional to the, the total amount, uh, the, the premium, annual premium is low. But I think for, uh, a project of this size to carry the cost of a thousand-dollar bond, it's roughly like half the annual rent. Um, that's a really substantial annual number for a, for a 20, 30-acre project. Uh, so we would typically see those decommissioning costs in the 20, $30,000 per megawatt range. So being a four, uh, almost five-megawatt project, we would expect that to be in the neighborhood of, uh, 100 to 150,000 dollars to actually decommissioning the facility. Uh, so we would expect, uh, that ultimately to be in the, the neighborhood of every land.
What's the lifespan of this facility you expect? Twenty-five to thirty years?
Thirty-five years.
Okay. What do you think, and don't answer this, what do you think, $30,000 for 35 years? That's why, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to tell you what we're trying to cover here for the county. It's, 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 at, at the end of the term of this, and, and when I was 20 years old, I thought 35 years was a long time. And I thought Christmas would never come when I was 15. But when I got 50 years old, it seems like to me that time, time goes by pretty fast. And I'm just concerned that we just don't encumber the county to a point that they, uh, for lack of a better word, have to tax the citizens. At the end of the term, if, if you say, forget it, take my bond, that's all you really have to do and walk away, and then the county is in, in, incumbent. That's the concern I would have.
Yeah, so I-
Just where I'm at.
Yeah, I do think that, that, that is, uh, well addressed by the five-year interval requirement of the bond amount. So, you know, that's going to be a number that is reassessed every five years. So we're not relying on the first-year estimation of that engineer to carry us through for the life of the project. Uh, and I also note that your, your condition, and we do not object to it, uh, had proposed a 10% contingency on that number as well. Uh, so we'll take a third-party engineer, reevaluate every five years, and we are, we are totally fine with the 10% contingency there as well. Uh, so we would hope that, that, that covers the county, and we're certainly, uh, trying to do our best to ensure that the county is covered.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Yes, sir, Mr. Yancy?
Um, as a person that served 37 years in the banking industry and approved and signed off on over probably 1,000 to 1,500 letters of credit, uh, to back up projects, um, my only, uh, comment to the county and to the fellow commissioners are this. Number one, if we allow these folks to do this, the selection of the approval of the issuer of the letter of credit or bond should be selected by the county. And also the engineering firm that will make that evaluation should also be exclusively selected by the county in making the determination of how much the bond should be for. Otherwise, 1 million dollars should be the very minimum at this point.
I'm sorry, is there a justification for the million-dollar number? I don't know what that relates to.
You're saying your project costs how much, sir?
It's approximately a 6 million dollar budget.
Okay, that, that's less than, um, 15%? Well, it's almost 18%. So, you know, it, it is what it is, you know? I'm not dead-set on the mill, but I am dead-set on the fact that a independent authority will have to make the evaluation what the bond will be, and that will not be selected by Redfish or anyone else other than Orange County.
I think as long as there's some reasonableness language around there, right? So that if it was, as long as we could ensure that we'd have the opportunity to, to provide our, a third-party engineer to, to rebut it in the event that there was truly something, uh, outlandish. Uh, obviously, we don't want to tie ourselves in not knowing to, to, to just some random, uh, number, unknown number that read it's effectively writing a book check. Um, so we, just some reasonableness language, I think, is all we would require in there to, and I think we'd be fine with you selecting it, and, and moving forward on that basis. I don't think we'd have objected to that at all.
Well, I'm, I'm a little bit opposed to the county spending money to, to do this. Would you take 10% of the project? As the bond?
Um, no, I don't think that would be reasonable or justified.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
Hey, can I just clarify something? I just want to make sure I heard-
Sorry, um-
Go ahead.
You, you had asked a question-
You started it. Did you get your answers?
I, well, uh, I guess I didn't get an exact number, but that, that is coming.
Okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Capel, I think that was you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, to kind of, uh, what I, I just want to repeat what I heard from Mr. Carton and Mr. Yancy. So, and partly Ms. Zellmacher as well. So, uh, what I heard was there's concern about the amount of the bond required at the end of the project to, you know, undo the project if, if something fails. And I heard Mr. Uh, I heard that Ms., I heard Mr. Carton say that it, that they believed the, the right amount was about 20,000 a megawatt. Uh, and this is a five-megawatt project, so they were planning somewhere around 100,000 to 150,000 in bond to decommission the project. And then I heard Mr. Yancy, uh, suggest that he would like not for the county to pay for the engineer, but to select the engineer. And then I heard Mr. Carton say that he was amenable to that, and all he would ask was that there was some language about reasonableness, that, you know, you wouldn't have an engineer that, you know, gave some crazy number, that they'd have some ability if, if it wasn't reasonable to have a chance to rebut it. Is that a, is that a, because what I heard was agreement, basically, is all I'm pointing out, so. Is that a fair-
That was by understanding of the conversation, yes, and, and what I had agreed to, yes.
Okay, got it.
That's a fair assessment. I asked for 10%, and then I asked for 10%, and he said no.
Right, and then you said 10%, and he said, no, that's, that, and because I, I don't want to answer for him. I heard the project was 6 million dollars, so 10% would be 600 grand.
Right. 400 grand more than he wanted.
Uh, 450 grand more, yeah.
Sure, that's right, 150, yeah, you're right. Your math is younger than mine.
Ms. Ms. Zellmacher, was that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, um, is, is that standard, like, is that what, um, the county has agreed to as well?
We, we haven't-
Go ahead, Sandra.
I was going to say, we, we haven't agreed to anything. We are presenting, um, you know, their responses, and as you're discussing now, their, their responses to the condition that we had first proposed. So, no, we, we have not agreed, and of course, we, um, we have only had one other, one other solar project approved in the county. So, um, I, we, we haven't agreed to a particular number with them.
And on the other project that is approved, uh, what was the amount?
Um, I, I think the language that was in the, I, I don't know the exact amount. The language that was in the draft conditions, um, for this approval was, was, I, I referred to the, the prior, uh, project to, for some guidance on that. So I, I'd have to look back to see, tell you exact, an exact number.
Okay, I was just curious if it was still like the 20 to 30?
Yeah, that, I think that's a great question, you know, that, is that 20,000 a mega, a wet, megawatt? Is that a generally accepted, you know, figure for this or not? I think that's a great question.
I just, I wanted to see if there's consistency.
Hold, hold on, let Mrs. Zellmacher finish, please.
That, that's it. I just, I wanted to see if there was consistency between, you know, and whether it was the standard.
Okay, identify yourself and go ahead, please.
And I don't know, I mean, we may have to look at some other, maybe some other localities. I mean, the prior approval happened, um, in 2017. And so, you know, I don't know whether, what was, I don't, I don't know how quickly, you know, these things would change over time. I don't, I don't know how quickly, you know, th- these things would change over time. You know, that, that's been about four years ago, so I don't know whether what was considered reasonable then would also still be considered now, and it was a much larger project. So, we, we can, and, I mean, if, if you would like us to look into that a little further, we certainly can do that.
Well, that's what I was going to ask the staff to do, to try to figure out, uh, do we do it by kilowatts, or do we do it by project percentage? And let's have a standard for these projects if we're going to do it. That way, we can stay consistent. Is, is that something that seems reasonable? I'm talking to staff now. Is that something that seems reasonable, um? Mr. Gillespie, Ms. Thornton?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I would reply that, um, this applicant has offered to provide an engineer's estimate of cost to decommission, which would begin to establish the standard for this project, which could be applied to others. And, you know, lacking that information, it's hard to, to know what their actual cost is. They have, uh, offered to provide an engineer's estimate of cost.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I. I, I, I mean, my, if I may, uh, my concern about putting a number to a megawatt is that as things change over time and with inflation, costs changes.
Right.
And so pegging that to a hard number puts us, you know, in industry, an industry of value and cost is going to change over time. So, I, I would, I would note that most places that have decommissioning provisions require a decommissioning plan with a surety or a guarantee that the decommissioning be provided for. And, uh, you know, to, to take a number and peg it to the kilowatt is based on current practice and current, um, current costs.
Right.
So, you know what we're after here, can you, can you help us with this? We're going to move along because we could swing this around all night long.
Sure.
Um, uh, and, and, and you know exactly what direction we're going in. And Sandra, you've done a good job with, uh, going back through it. But let's move beyond that one to, uh, the rest of the sheet here.
Um, would, would you like to, to go through them, you know, one by one? How, how would you like to approach it?
Well, I'm just saying, if a commissioner has a question, we would address them, because we've had these. Let us, if they have a question, ask it.
Okay. While, if I might, while commissioners may be formulating their questions, we, one of the things that we discussed yesterday, and, uh, Mr. Capel has already, uh, this evening alluded to their, um, provision at your last meeting of the, the visual, uh, model to, to evaluate. Um, I think we, uh, as indicated in the February memo, they had objected to the, one-hundred-foot, you know, vegetated buffer. Um, they indicated that their, the visual that they had, uh, provided to us was based on a thirty-five-foot buffer. We discussed the use yesterday, that's the use of, um, native vegetation for their, uh, any supplemental planning that needs to be done. Um, they were in agreement with that. So I think one of the things that, you know, does need to be, you know, added to, um, you know, sort of a, uh, a final proposed list of conditions, if you will, for your consideration, um, at your next meeting would be, you know, um, uh, I think we need to have a, sort of, a, a number, you know, for the, for the width of the, uh, buffer to be, uh, maintained and planned, so, um, I, I just wanted to reference that.
Okay, Mr. Capel, you had a question on that, are you satisfied?
Well, I thought the, uh, I thought that the, uh, the, uh, visuals they provided, um, I was satisfied with, with, with it. So.
Okay, looks like we've achieved that goal. Any other questions of any other commissioners?
Um, when you had asked that question about the actual benefit, uh, to the residents of Orange County, was that going to be answered at this meeting, Mr. Brooks?
Um, you know, that's a good, let's ask it. Um, uh, the applicant's on board, state whoever you are that's going to speak for it, and, and give us a benefit to the citizens of Orange County.
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone, Jeff Matron with EDF. Um, and I had sent you, I forwarded you and the other commissioners an email yesterday. Uh, Chairman Brooks, I don't know if you had a chance to see it yet, but, um, unfortunately, uh, Mr. James Wright, who spoke at the last hearing Sunday, was not able to make it this evening. But, uh, they did an analysis, uh, Old Dominion Electric Cooperative, and this particular project will be saving, uh, Repahannick Electric members fifty cents, um, a year. Last year, I'm sorry, this past, yeah, year in January, uh, Repahannick Electric actually put out a press release that their, their, um, each, uh, customer, each, uh, connection will be saving, uh, uh, average customer approximately a thousand kilowatt-hours, uh, per month will be saving six dollars. Um, and they, they said that this was due partly because of their, their increase in investing in renewable energy sources. Following that up, again, uh, the analysis that Old Dominion completed shows that over, um, every connection is going to save fifty cents per year because of investments like, in projects like Redfish Solar. So, and that's, again, in addition to the environmental savings, uh, of projects like this, reducing carbon emissions that have, uh, significant impacts on rural communities. And I listed those out in the email that I sent to you yesterday. I don't know if that helps answer your question, or if you have additional questions on the matter.
So, you, you're saying that each Repahannick Electric customer is going to save fifty cents a year, so.
Because of this project, yes.
If this, if ten thousand Repahannick customers, it's ten, it's, uh, five thousand dollars a year, then, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct, almost twelve thousand.
Okay.
In Orange County. And that's in addition to, if I may add also, that, uh, and again, this was in the email I sent to you yesterday, there, there was a, a USDA census that was conducted in two thousand seventeen showing that four hundred and seventeen, uh, farms in Orange County, making out ninety-five thousand acres, operated at a loss of twenty-six thousand dollars. So this all offers an alternative to those host farmers, uh, an additional way to make money on their property. Projects like this do, I should say.
Okay. Any other questions on the, the benefits to the county? Okay, do you have anything else, Ms. Thornton or Mr. Gillespie?
No, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything additional. I, I would, you know, propose that, you know, as I said, a, a revised list of proposed conditions will be prepared for your review prior to the May sixth meeting, based on, you know, your discussion.
Okay. So, this goes to our May sixth agenda, um, is any reason we shouldn't just go ahead and forward it there and, um, or is there some more comments that we need to, a discussion we need to have?
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, it goes to May sixth.
That revision of the, uh, conditions includes, uh, the four that, uh, Mr. Yancy indicated from the Farm Bureau plus the battery?
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, Ms. Thornton said she would put those in.
Yes.
Um, if, if I may, regarding the battery, I think I, we agreed, uh, at the last hearing that, uh, we're, we're more than amiable to, to come back for, if we were to move forward with the battery at some point, come back to, to the county, so, that, that would not be an issue.
And, Mr. Chairman, point of order, do you, do we need to close the public hearing?
Um, I guess we do, but it was, it was kind of a continuation of all the conditions. But if we want to, I don't think we close it until we meet on the sixth to finalize it. Is that correct, Eric?
Mr. Chairman, your understanding is correct.
Yeah, I, I think it, I don't think we need to close it at this point. It's just going to continue on to the five, six, twenty-one. Um, like the, uh, other, uh, hearings that we have here. Now, we've finished public hearings, A, B, C, and we have no work session. Mr. Gillespie, uh, the work program, we're going to move to the next agenda, is that what you're saying?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, we, we discussed this earlier today. I'd like to give an abbreviated version of, uh, an outline for, uh, either, either your next meeting or the meeting after, if we're keeping with the, uh, the intent to have the second meetings of the month be more informational and work session-related. So, what I'd like to do. Okay, very good. Uh, I do want to note that, uh, we had discussed the, uh, Germana Wilderness Area Plan briefing being a work session item for your second meeting in May. So, what I'd like to do is give you some homework and, um, a little introduction to the homework then. So, uh, what I talked about, uh, bringing forward at this particular session was an overview of, uh, Planning Commission Work Program. Uh, a work program sets the agenda for the year's planning commission initiatives, and it's in tandem with your budget request and the outlay that's been made for the year, and your accountability back to the Board of Supervisors, um, hopefully, uh, in an annual reporting basis that we'll, uh, we'll be working on. The planning services or planning staff in Orange County has had administrative work programs, so staff-level work programs over time. Um, the Planning Commission, uh, does not have a current work program, so the proposal is to develop one. Uh, these can address, again, how we spend our allocation of funds for the year. Some are administrative and, and programmed, and some may, um, be more ongoing and evolving. And so, you know, to be clear, a master plan update or a comprehensive plan update, zoning ordinance, text amendments, um, training for commissioners and staff, all of those fall within things that, um, should be somewhat programmed. However, uh, the budget really fails to, to really communicate the activities throughout the year that are ongoing and evolving, uh, priorities. And I'll, I'll list a couple of those, kind of, at the, uh, just a second here. And so those have either unspecified costs, uh, or, uh, had not been conceived of at all when the budget was prepared. So best practice suggests that the Planning Commission adopt an annual work program as your formal agenda for the year and your initiatives for the year. Um, usually also, a Planning Commission would maintain a long-term work program that spans two to six years and serves as our long-range or strategic plan for the Planning Commission, which, which may survive the current members, uh, terms of office. So, like, uh, long-term transportation improvement plans or capital improvement programs, uh, it's similar, except it focuses on, uh, Planning Commission Work Program will focus on activities and initiatives of the Planning Commission instead of the more, uh, community, uh, investments that are made in infrastructure and capital expenditures by the local government. So, what I would like to do is, uh, suggest we have a multi-year work program. That's our running prioritized list of initiatives that we can undertake in any given period of time, whether that's a, uh, three-year program, uh, period of time, or a one-year or less period of time. So, when it's time to prepare our next annual work program, then we'll go back and look at the longer list and see what did not get accomplished, uh, or scheduled for the past year, and think about bringing those forward. So, that's a quick overview on what work programs are and what they'd like to be. Um, I took the liberty to state some potential priorities for you all this year. Comprehensive plan amendments, and just a reminder, the comprehensive plan was last adopted by the Board of Supervisors in two thousand eighteen. Um, so we're going on three years now. Elements of the comprehensive plan include land use, public facilities, transportation, capital improvements, natural resources, planning, public services, and community infrastructure. And while some of those things are somewhat taken for granted or, uh, having, um, a fairly stable trajectory, I'll, I'll point out that some of those are more dynamic, and it, it may be appropriate to revisit those in a more frequent interval than every five years, especially if we look at them as independent elements. Um, kind of the second area that you might look at to do it in any given year might be area plans. Um, so an example is the Germana Wilderness Area Plan, which we heard a lot about tonight. Um, Barbersville is a specific area of the county, other particular areas. Text amendments to codes, especially the code sections in the county relative to subdivisions and zoning. Number four, administrative items, personnel, um, digitizing our records for, for more transparency and access to information, updating planning permitting, inspections and enforcement system, which, which I am engaged in, um, beginning last week. Community relations, uh, about planning activities of the, of the commission and force of staff and the Board of Supervisors, um, relative to planning. And then special subjects, which we've talked about tonight, but could include, uh, preservation of forested and farmed lands, solar energy generating facilities, policies for those facilities. Uh, housing in the county is a special subject. And I do want to note that, uh, we were approached, uh, recently by an individual who proposed um, some consideration of the minimum square footage of detached accessory apartments. And I would propose that, uh, to the commission as an area for special study. And, um, you know, with your direction, we'd bring some information back to you on that at your next meeting. But my request to you tonight is to, uh, to work between now and your next meeting and your, your second meeting in May for a new, um, informational session and your work session on some ideas for things to put on the priority list. Uh, whether we start with number one or number twenty, uh, I'd love to have a list to begin to start with. And that's my, uh, report on the work program.
Thank you, sir. Any, uh, particular questions at this point, or we just, uh, we'll wait till we see, uh, and hear more about the work program?
Hey, Josh.
It looks like we have no, oh.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just, all, all I want to say is I just think that's an exceptional idea. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, thanks for, you know, allowing Josh to bring that forward, and Josh for presenting it. Could you, would you please just send, um, the commission, just the list of those subjects that you went through?
Surely, Mr. Capel, I, again, I will say, I, I do not intend to provide you all your priorities. I would love to hear back from as many of you, um, as we can on, on your priorities. But yes, I will send, I'll, I'll send, I'll send a short list.
Just those buckets, you, you kind of gave us some buckets. That's all I'm after, the, the headings that we could think about.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Johnson, if you're still on board, do you have anything from the Board Supervisors?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't, don't have anything, uh, to talk about tonight.
Thank you, sir. Uh, planning development report, Josh, uh, anything else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I do want to, uh, bring to your attention a, a change that we've made relative to posting information on, um, planning cases, uh, zoning, special use permit cases, et cetera. And, um, I didn't prep our IT people that I wanted to share the screen, so I have to let them know I'd like to share the screen now. Do I have the ability to do that?
You should have the ability to do that, Josh, and, 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 and share a screen.
Okay, thank you. All right, this will be pretty quick. Can you all see the Orange County website page that I pulled up?
Sure.
Okay, great. So, we've created a page for pending zoning cases in the county. This would be, uh, rezoning, special use permits, special exceptions that go to the board. Um, and this can be expanded into, to other, um, planning cases. So this is just an example of, uh, something that's built into the system that allows us to track, uh, the current status of the case. And, uh, we've talked a little bit about a current case, which is Wilderness Crossing, we're, uh, rezoning REZ twenty-one oh-two. This is the, the large case that, um, has recently been filed and is currently in the Application Review Committee, or AR. and is currently in the application review committee or A R C review. So when you look at the top of this page, you'll see this is the address. Basically, get to pending zoning cases. Um, and then, you know, the easiest way to get there is just to go to departments, planning services and pending zoning cases. So just a quick run-through on that, this is currently green. It's past our application review stage. It's in the current, uh, application review committee stage. Uh, the application review committee met this morning, and, uh, will continue to be in the review committee for a while longer if it progresses through these additional stages, uh, town hall, staff report, planning mission hearing and board of supervisors hearing. These will begin to turn from yellow to green or gray to yellow to green. Um, there's a description in here of each of the case status, um, uh, stages, so I don't want to belabor that in the meeting tonight, but you can click here and pull that up. And you can kind of get a sense of this. And then in each individual case, we have, uh, who the, uh, assigned case manager is. In this case, I'm, I'm managing the rezoning for Wilderness Crossing because, uh, we're gonna give Sandra some relief on on case management. Um, so I'll be taking this one. Um, this is a summary of the project from their narrative in the application materials and then their application materials. So in this case, we have application affidavits, a pattern book, the narrative, a general development plan, market study and fiscal impact analysis. So these are all available along with a general location map to the citizens in the county. And the whole purpose and intent is to increase transparency, uh, decrease manual responses to phone calls and emails for people just trying to get information about a case that's coming at us. So we'll be building this into the current cases. So the three you've heard tonight are a little progressed, uh, through these stages. We haven't loaded them up yet, but we'll be doing that soon. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, this was easy to use. I've been through it, but, uh, from an ARC, uh, committee standpoint, there's on all, uh, five of those sub-elements there, uh, there's too much for me to print out. Can we get copies of all of those? Uh, I've done some selective printing on key issues, but you get into the market study and financial impact analysis, it's way too long.
Yeah, Mr. Hutchison and and all the commissioners, um, that are interested in this or any other case, there are always special attachments that are, or attachments that are made to applications that include, uh, color documents, large and large format and oversized documents, lengthy, lengthy documents. Um, especially with this case, the pattern book is, I think, um, sixty or seventy color pages on eleven-inch by seventeen-inch paper. It's hard to read at a different scale. Um, certainly, we will communicate to the applicant that, that, uh, any member who wants these items, um, can be provided them. And then again, generally, they're published online, so people can, uh, can view them and access them as they choose. So I would just ask any commissioner who wants print copies to please let staff know, let me, Susan, I mean, Susan Sandra or Tracy know, and we'll tell the applicant to get us some additional copies for your review. And when you're done with your copies, if you, um, don't want to hold on to them after you've done looking at them on paper, we'll just keep them in the office for, uh, citizens to be able to look at at the counter.
I make my formal request now.
Okay.
I would ask though, Josh, I, I, I see where you're going with that. But I would ask though, on something like that, can we ask the applicant to make sure they provide a copy for each commissioner as well as the copies they have to provide for you all?
We can. It's, it's not in code. It's not a statutory, I mean, a codified requirement right now. So it, it's sort of a matter of preference and negotiation based on what people think that we want or need versus what some of the folks may want or need. Um, certainly for this one, I, I mean, I guess I'd just ask here if, if every commissioner wants a paper copy. Um, a few of you have some of these materials already. So, um, I guess I would ask if you want to poll everybody real quickly, if every commissioner wants a copy, and Mr. Johnson, we can get you a copy now. We'll certainly get a copy to the members of the board as well. Do I want paper?
Go, go ahead and go ahead and prepare it for everyone. If somebody doesn't want it, they can call you and tell you they don't. I, 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 I'm sort of like Mr., I looked through some of that and printing this, and, uh, it's just a bit much. But the color is what helps in some of these, uh, uh, narratives there and the pattern book and things. It helps you understand what's really trying to happen, where if you only have a black and white printer, it doesn't emphasize what you're looking for.
Yes, sir. No, I completely understand. It's on the app. Yes, sir, I, I understand it's completely on the applicant to provide that, um, as, as needed to be able to, uh, communicate their case.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir, that, well, there are others, but that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. Um, before we go to commissioners' comments, I want to ask, um, uh, George Yancy to go first. He, he has a proposal for the commission, and, um, I want him to go, and then, uh, the other commissioners can chime in. But I know we're getting long, so let's try to wrap it up a little easier, a little quicker if we can. George, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, after much consideration and, uh, trying to myself educate myself in terms of, um, the pros and cons of the, um, merits of solar facilities uh, and also the, um, uh, letter from the, uh, Orange Farm Bureau. Uh, I spoke with Andy Hutchison from the Farm Bureau, who is president, um, and tried to ascertain, and some of you know Andy was a former planning commissioner, uh, himself. His position is their proposal, uh, is not pro or con. It is basically, we, they think we need to do a better job of doing our homework before we proceed further with, uh, other solar facilities. So therefore, given that consideration, uh, I am making the following recommendations to, uh, the planning commission. And that is in the form of a layman's resolution that I've drafted that says, it's a resolution to the Orange County Board of Supervisors, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The members of the Orange County Planning Commission hereby recommends that the Orange County Board of Supervisors pass the attached resolution for temporary moratorium on the approval of all solar-generated facilities forthcoming in the future. Furthermore, this moratorium will exempt all residential homes and commercial businesses from this temporary moratorium when the installation purpose is for solar panels for self-use purposes. This action is requested to enable the Orange County administrative staff, the Orange County Board of Supervisors and the Orange County Planning Commission to collectively modify, draft, adopt and/or revise existing land use and zoning ordinances and the revisions necessary to the comp plan, two thousand fifteen comp plan for the purpose of implementation of such changes and/or additional requirements of approval. Uh, I request that this resolution be adopted by the planning commission at its bi-monthly meeting held on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. In addition, Eric has been kind enough to draft a good resolution to present to the board of supervisors, which, uh, I can furnish you or Eric will furnish you, uh, promptly. I'd like for this to be under consideration. I think, I'm not saying we've got to halt everything. I think we need to get our collective, uh, actions together to go forth on approval of future solar farm facilities.
Mr. Yancy, just on, um, first question, would you accept a date on that? Would you, by that I mean, would you say that the moratorium wouldn't last, uh, for ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, um, so it's just not open-ended forever?
I think that's a decision the board of supervisors makes, not us as a planning commission. I think what we're saying, what I'm saying on behalf of the commission is we need to call a timeout at this junction and point out that maybe collectively, all of us together can come up with a plan of action that is in the best interest of the citizens as well as the county, because I, I feel strongly that, you know, any of these projects should be revenue neutral at minimum to the county and in some cases should be revenue positive, uh, for the county. Uh, and, you know, I, I, I agree with the Farm Bureau. Uh, it, this is not a pro or con. It is, we need to do our homework and we need to come up with a, a course of action and specific objectives and goals that we want when we see another application. I think we've got, got all kinds of questions here tonight with Redfish, but this will not, resolution does not impact Redfish. Redfish is already in the, in the process and therefore should be duly considered, uh, in a normal course of business.
So just so you know, I'm not in a po- opposition to the resolution, but I do think we're putting a time limit on it, so something we can work on. And the other comment I'll say, and I'll just throw it out there, um, I hear Farm Bureau, but, um, every project we had comes off a farm. So, and, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to hamper their, their process, but I also understand we don't have our ducks in a row to approve these projects. So I'm just, I'm, the resolution doesn't bother me. It just needs to be a time limit on it. That's my comment. Any other commissioner? Go ahead.
I mean, uh, Jason here, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, we've seen all the recommendations, uh, with solar farms, and I don't know what we would do differently with this one. I mean, you have to have decommissioning, gotta have screening, gotta have buffering. It's a limited area where they go. They're only gonna be near the transmission points. I mean, I just, I, I'm actually a little stunned, really. You know, that this, that this is something we're gonna put a moratorium on and all the other things that we've talked about, particularly the thing I'm most passionate about, which is just the absolute unfettered building of homes going around in the county that actually costs us money, that we have no interest at all in this body to do anything about that. I mean, I, I'm a little stunned by it. I, I'm not inclined to support it in the least bit. I, I, uh, I, I don't know what else we would do with Redfish. Even if we had, if using Redfish as an example, you know, wh- what would we do differently? I mean, we, we're, they're, they're doing the bond. They're, they've agreed to the, the, uh, uh, the, the, uh, w- lack of the batteries, they've agreed to screening. I mean, I, I actually think, and I'm not against forming an ordinance, uh, you know, in general, I think that's a good idea, but to, to put a moratorium, I mean, my gosh, there's a moratorium on uranium in the, in the state, but solar panels? I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's, the whole, the whole issue just seems ridiculous to me, honestly, given the other things that we're facing in this county, that we've got zero traction on, none, none at all. So have at it.
Any other commissioner?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to, um, approve the, uh, resolution.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, just, just to clarify, we're, we're talking about recommending the resolution, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Recommending it to the board of supervisors.
That's right.
And I just, I just sent that resolution to the commissioners.
Okay, so while we're in the discussion period here, Mr. Yancy, you won't take a, a timeframe on it?
Pardon, sir?
You won't take a timeframe on it? Uh, a moratorium for just a hundred and twenty days?
I think that, uh, should be determined by the next, uh, higher body, and that, that's the privilege of the board of supervisors, not the planning commission.
Okay. Any other questions, comments by commissioners? I'd been moved in second that we will s- send a recommended resolution to put a moratorium on, uh, solar applications that are not associated with personal or private areas of, uh, solar panels. We're as for roll call vote, please, Ms. Thornton.
And does not include Redfish.
Does not include them, right. Everything, it's, everything that's gone, is gone. Every, everything from this point on is what the resolution is.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, that language is not in the resolution as I have just sent it to you, so it doesn't include anything exempting Redfish. Uh, but we can, we can place that in the resolution if the commission thinks that appropriate.
Eric, would you like for me to read that resolution so that everybody?
Sure.
If you send it, we can all.
I've got it. Already received it.
To Jason's point about the, um, drafting ordinances, is that in there?
Uh, yeah, you know, we'll, we'll get to that when we, uh, do the zoning ordinances, you know, that we agreed to do after we passed the GWAP. I mean, this is just another.
Okay. Well, you ready for it? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Capel?
I'm always first, aren't I, Sandra? Is that alphabetical? I mean, every time, but, you know, my answer is nay. I mean, it's, we're in silly land.
District, district order, uh, numerically. Uh, Mr. Yancy?
Hi.
Mr. Brooks? Mr. Brooks? Can, can you hear me still?
I can hear you. I can hear you. I just haven't decided which one I'm gonna vote with.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that. I didn't know whether something had happened to my audio.
Something happened to my brain. I, I want that timestamp, and then I'm just trying to see. Nay.
Ms. Zealmaker?
This, this was exempting Redfish or no? I didn't.
Yes.
But as commissioners, I'm sorry, as the, as the resolution is currently worded, there is no language in there that specifically exempts Redfish. Uh, if a commissioner requests, we can put that in there, but what we're currently voting on is what you have by email.
Right, and that's, so, and we can't change this vote now. We can vote this down and put another vote in, but we can't change this vote.
So, Mr. Brooks, your vote was no?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Zealmaker?
Um, so I would like there to be, um, a time amount in there, like Mr. Brooks said.
So you're is that a, is that a no, a no vote on what you received?
On, on what I've received, nay.
Nay, okay. And Mr. Hutchison?
Yeah, without, uh, the Redfish being in there, uh, my vote is nay for an exemption.
Okay, so, okay, so that, the motion to recommend the resolution that you received by email failed, uh, one to four.
Okay, just to, just so that we don't pass over this and seem like it, so we, I will entertain another motion now, characterize another way, uh, then we're gonna move on and close out. If so, somebody shows desires, I don't want to push it one way or the other. Somebody shows desires to say exempt Redfish and put a timestamp, as the commissioner said, I'll entertain that motion.
Uh, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the existing To approve the existing. Resolution modified. To not include the Redfish. SUP. And. To make a statement that the board of supervisors come up with a recommended time. For the moratorium.
Okay.
Commissioner Hutchison, may I ask, as. As your staff support, but obviously no, not suggesting anything. If perhaps you might. Use clarifying language to say any pending applications at the time of the adoption of an ordinance. I think that would clarify your, I think that would meet your intent and and be more clear than referring to a specific case name.
If if.
Not be case specific.
Ms. Thornton, you got those words. That's fine. That takes care of the Redfish. Effort.
Okay. That that raises a, may I ask a question as you go forward with this? Would that be appropriate?
Go ahead.
If we were to receive.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I I just am I'm wondering how this would. Potentially be applied to any applications that may come in before the board takes. Action on your recommendation concern, or if you if you forward the recommendation, how would how would any? Patients received in the interim be. Considered.
When's the next board? When's the next board meeting? When's the next board meeting? Because this this ain't going to sit very long. They better, they better apply quick.
Well, and and I'm I'm not expecting anyone to come right in the door, but we, as we've reported for some time, we we continually receive inquiries, so.
Yeah, well.
So because we have a. Hold up, guys, because we've got a motion for this. Let's 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 get things back in order here. So I could tell you that this motion has no. Valid effect until the board puts something in action. It's if it's, we're asking the board to do this. So nothing changed for the planning department until the board moves.
Absolutely. Understood. Yeah, that's totally understood. Yeah.
That's so. Don't do anything until the board moves and makes an action. You y'all go for it. There's a motion.
Can Sandra read the motion with the rewritten verbiage?
Please.
I am, I'm redrafting it, so I I can read that to you.
Oh.
Unless unless Andrew, you are drafting something.
Well, I I have some notes, but if you read, if you're redrafting, I will defer to you.
Sure, okay. What I have is any, it adds the sentence, any pending special use permit applications. Pending at the time of the adoption of this resolution are exempted from this moratorium. And this moratorium shall expire on, and I simply put a blank underline. With the note in brackets, dates be filled in by the board of supervisors. Generally, I I. Recommend specificity about things like that, but I but I I don't hear a specific date being proposed.
Okay, so everybody's heard the motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
You, George, you second it? Okay, remove the second. All in favor, please roll call.
Mr. Hutchison?
Aye.
Ms. Zellmaker?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
This, Mr. Yancy?
Aye.
Mr. Capel?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries four to one.
So there is a question, so one. All right. Um, let's see here. Mr. Capel, do you have anything else to bring before the commission?
Oh, I got all sorts of stuff, Mr. Chairman, but I'll I'll save it for another time.
Thank you. Mr. Yancy, you have anything other than what you presented?
No, sir.
Chair has nothing likewise. Mrs. Zellmaker, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Hutchinson, do you have anything?
No, sir.
The next meeting date is May the 6th, 2021. We have several SUPs, so be prepared to have a second. And study up. Mr. Gillespie gave you all homework. I'm gonna give you some too. Since he's a new guy, give you homework. Old guy will maybe do it. Please know your SUPs and your rezoning, so then when we get ready to vote, we'll know what we're voting on and how we're voting. I solicited a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and second with adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you so much. We appreciate everyone.